So I will call this morning's meeting to order. We will start by honor in our country with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda today is Judge Rentschler. Is there a representative here of the judge this morning?
Good morning. Jennifer Scheniberi, HR Director. The judge may have gotten hold up with something else, but this is a request for a position titled court reporter to be reclassified from a CO MOT one to a PAT three position due to increased job responsibilities and job duties. If you remember, we recently approved in Superior Court a similar job reclassification. It's going to be almost exactly identical to that, or that's what they're suggesting. So that both courts are set up similarly so that there is one person that's taking the administrative duties from the judge to free the judge up to do his duties. So it went through the Personnel Committee. It also went through WIS and both gave a recommendation to approve this. I don't know what questions you might have.
Any questions of Jennifer, please?
Jennifer, this is a person that works with you then, Personnel. You'd like her added duties was going to be handling personnel in that department, correct?
They would, correct. If there are any personnel issues, correct. That's how the, it's, it's working now in Superior Court. Yeah. She conducted recently the an evaluation on an employee and I would expect it to be the same in Circuit Court.
And this was a job or responsibility that in the past had been handled by the judge himself?
Correct. And they would both like to be freed up so that they don't have to do those responsibilities.
Yeah, I believe when the Personnel Committee met, we thought that it made good sense that both of our courts have the same operating process and that then our judges are free to take their higher responsibilities and do issues that are not as, I don't want to say as significant, but not directly related to the court process, take away some of the administrative responsibilities. And since we'd already approved it for the Circuit Court, Personnel Committee recommends that we approve it for the Superior Court as well.
Well, and Judge Rentschler also indicated that he was taking on more duties, so that would alleviate time for those. And the Prosecutor's Office as well is, is set up similarly. They have someone that does the administrative duties as well. So all three would be set up similarly.
Make a motion to approve the status of the court reporter, one of the recommendations of Personnel Committee.
A motion by Councilman Barrett.
I'll second it.
The second by Councilman Comfort, exactly.
Excuse me, could I?
It's the mask.
He was going to use my first name.
Yeah, it's, it's the mask. You got me through.
Excuse me, could I ask a question as well? I, I forgot to note that we do need to approve whenever we approve something like this, an effective date. And for payroll purposes, it's, it is good that we do it at the start of a pay period as well. So I know, I believe there was a request by Judge Rentschler to have, to have that retroactive to February. I don't know if you have, do you have that date? But that's completely up to you. If you don't want to, you could make it effective, but I just asked that you not make it effective today because it's not the beginning of a pay period. We either make it effective on Sunday or Monday of the, of next week. I don't have a calendar here. Or you retroactive, make it retroactive to whatever date in February.
The first pay in February would have been February eighth. So I don't know if you want to make that as a part of the.
What would the date be?
Either February eighth or March eighth.
I'm in my motion to make it effective on February the eighth.
I'm, I agree in a second. It was Judge Rentschler's intention to begin to start the process in February on the expectation that this would eventually be passed. So I believe that's why the effective date was established for them.
The motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed, the same, and let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all board members present. Sheriff Gatten, please. Yep, I appreciate that. And I think probably a couple other people do also. Scott Wagner, please.
Good morning. I am back again. Last meeting, we were here to approve February part-time position and that person has found a full-time job. That person is gone now, the key is gone. And so we're bringing to you today requests to transition Jackie Wersler, existing musician clerk from part-time to full-time. What did the Personnel Committee, reason why we're doing that? She was going to be on the budget this year anyway to be full-time. Just because the duties of that position have increased and now with COVID, having shot clinic four days a week, we really need her to be full-time. In addition to that, please note that the grants that she's being paid out now will continue to be paid toward that salary, about approximately $17,000 a year. So that will continue to be applied to the salary, just like we do with Carly LaRue. So there will be money there to offset that cost.
And I will tell you that coming for the Personnel Committee, Scott shared some of the increase in duties of this position. It's, COVID is going to continue on throughout the rest of the year, at least the increased responsibilities there. And there are other administrative things that this person would take up as the opportunity allows. So the Personnel Committee brings a favorable to pass suggestion.
Just know also that when April is gone, that so Monday and Fridays, those, those, the clinic is closed. And that's been the case for many years now. So April's got four weeks of vacation every year. And so now with Jackie, she'll be full-time. That way the clinic can be open five days a week.
Any other questions of Scott?
I make a motion that we approve the job classification change to full, from part-time to full-time, continuing as a COMAT four at the proposed salary of $31,760 annually.
Second, sir. I have a motion by Councilman.
Would you like to do next Monday? That's next payroll date.
April eighth, March eighth.
Thank you.
Motion was made by Councilman Comfort and the second was by Councilman Alder Bright.
I would just also note that this does not leave an opening for an additional part-time person to just be hired. This is a replacement of this issue.
Um, I also just wanted to know, let you guys know, when I found out about this, I didn't have time to advertise for the additional appropriation that it will take to cover her salary to go to full-time. So I will get that ready and all that paperwork ready and get that to you at your next meeting to just do the formal approval for that paperwork and get it signed. I just didn't have time for this meeting, so.
Thank you.
But that's something that we can't approve now without you having your end of it done? Or does it need to wait until it's advertised?
You, well, you technically can approve it, yes, and it can start and then just approve the additional at your next meeting, so.
Because it will still use the grant money to pay.
Yep. So my motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed, the same, and let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all members present.
Would you like a little update or no?
Absolutely.
So we are still orange, I do believe. If we don't turn yellow this week, it'll be next week. Now, we are seeing the decrease in numbers. We haven't had more than 10 people per day that's positive. We are still one of the lowest in Northeast Indiana and possibly Northern Indiana on death for COVID, which is great. We are seeing a lot less numbers overall statewide. We are vaccinating close to between 900 and 1,000 people a week here at Woodley County. So that will continue through March. We're already scheduled through March on that. We have been notified about Johnson &amp; Johnson and our idea for Johnson &amp; Johnson, this point, if we get any, will to do be what they call closed pods. We'll be going to either our senior apartments to do those or possibly involving other closed sectors of populations, not offering it as a competition to Moderna, just because that causes a lot of problems in the clinic. But otherwise, we will use to our best abilities that the state will allow us to. Also, they are downgrading the availability to 55 today and 50 tomorrow morning. So anybody 50 and older can now get it as of Wednesday morning. I think that's it. Unless you have any other specific questions? I don't think right now there's any issues with the variant that you hear on the news causing a problem. Indiana has had over 150 people diagnosed with a variant and they don't seem to have any more worse conditions than anybody else.
Scott, could you just briefly explain the color coding? Because I know there are two factors. Even though our numbers are improving, our color doesn't change.
So just so you know, this is a completely made up thing from the state. There's no rules behind it. There's no guidance. This is just something they made up based upon what their opinion is. So the color codes go by a couple of different things. The number of people tested and the number of people who are positive, all those who are tested. And involves your population per 100,000 people. So there's a percentage involved. That's why when you see 10 people positive in Woodley County versus 10 people positive in Noble County, it's different percentage because they have a higher population. So even though we may not be seeing higher numbers of people around us, our percentage is higher because they have a smaller population. So that's why we've been red longer, orange longer, because our percentage is higher. So we have to be under that percentage for the next color change for two weeks before we change into the next color change. So like I said, either it will be this week or next week for yellow and then eventually down to blue and then nothing. So that's how it changes. That's why we're always perceived to be higher for some reason because we are smaller than our all surrounding neighbors, so.
Is it taken into consideration at all if you have a lesser population with approximately the same square miles that you're probably spread out and socially distanced more at all? That's not even a factor?
No, just go by population. Yeah, so. But if you look, if you tab through all the different sections on the state website, you'll see the numbers of tested people are quite high compared to our, our population, our people who have been positive, our cases. All those are normal or above average for our county compared to other counties. So it's not like we've been lagging behind on anything. We're keeping up there with everybody else. But our death numbers are way less than everybody else. So it's been good for us.
Very good. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Jason Myers, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jason Meyer, Executive Director of Easter Seals Passages. Thank you for letting me provide a brief update today. I did include with you a news release announcing our merger as well as our strategic plan. Basically through this year, Easter Seals Arc runs with a strategic plan every five years. So we're on the tail end of this five-year period. That's why it's dated 17 to 21. So I wanted to just update everyone on the council on our merger with Easter Seals Arc. So Passages has been in Woodley County since 1954 and started conversations with Easter Seals Arc last September of 2020 due to a lot of concerns that we have from our federal funding and state funding. We're primarily Medicaid funded. So always when there's changes in Medicaid, changes in leadership at the state and national level, we're always on the chopping block when it comes to funding. So we're always trying to be really proactive to stay ahead of that. There's a lot of national funding cuts that are projected to potentially come to our field in the coming years. So we started the conversation with Easter Seals. We've worked with them for many, many years on various initiatives, most recently employment in Columbia City High School for pre-employment for youth with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And then again at Whitco with Dr. Penrod when he was there and Ward Lamon and the team out there. We really started working with Easter Seals. They're a nonprofit in Fort Wayne, similar to what Passages is here in Woodley County. So we thought that it would be very good to partner with an organization like Easter Seals as opposed to getting consumed by a for-profit. So we did announce the merger in December and effective actually yesterday, we became Easter Seals Passages. So there'll be very little change that you'll see in Woodley County. So our direct support professionals will still be serving our individuals with disabilities here in Woodley County. We have about 130 employees altogether. About 100 of those are direct support staff that work in the homes with the individuals. We serve individuals with Down Syndrome, different disabilities. We did rehabilitate the area right next to Parkview Woodley Hospital. We did a improvement with that building, the old Limburg Medical Office building back in 2012. And our main office will be out of the Creative Learning Center now instead of at the Van Buren Building, which was downtown. So we'll be moving our admin staff that haven't moved already over to the Learning Center. I made the move yesterday. But you'll see very little change. So we're still going to have our presence here in Woodley County. The merger also allows us to pay our staff more. So our direct support professionals have always been very below the pay scale. We make about the level of Walmart and Target workers right now, and that's even with the $2 an hour wage increase that we've been able to do. So Commissioner Schump served on our board. I know that Jan has served on our housing board as well. So they'd be happy to answer any additional questions too. I could go in more detail. I know we have limited time here, but we do have a housing corporation with Woodley Crossings Neighborhood Corporation, which is in this news release as well. And we are merging that corporation with Bright Point. So Bright Point is going to keep our two Woodley Crossings employees here in Woodley County. Their office will move from the Van Buren Building to the Clugston Senior Apartments. So there'll still be local contact there as well. But it's overall very positive for both organizations. I think really prepares us for the future, prepares us more so for any additional state and federal cuts that we could potentially see in Medicaid. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but I know you have a lot on the agenda.
Are there any plans on the table right now to develop the site up there on North Oak Street?
Yes. So that's a very good question. So we have two grants actually that we've received from Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority as well as another two from Federal Home Loan Bank of Indianapolis. And we have two projects planned. So we're going to be building eight homes over off of Oak Street. And Bright Point, we've been working very closely with them on the grants and continuing that project. So it's actually nine. I said eight, sorry. It's, we were looking at eight, but it is nine in that first phase. And they're going to run along, hopefully around, along Oak and north there in the corner and then back on the tree line there on the property are the other six. So we're actually working with the Plan Commission on those plans. And then the second set of grants is rehabbing the Clugston Senior Apartments downtown. Because they were rehabbed originally in 1999, 2000. We're going to be putting in a new HVAC, new appliances, carpet, roofing, windows and things to that nature to really bring it up as well. So those two projects will continue. Between the two, there's about 3 million in grants for them available through the state that we're going to be utilizing in the next later this year. COVID's put us a bit bound behind construction. And Bright Point will be overseeing both of those.
You mentioned there were 30 administrative employees. Will there continue to be 30 administrative employees in Woodley County?
So what had happened is with that, so we had 125 employees altogether, as I mentioned, five of which did not carry over. And they were primarily HR and accounting staff. So we will keep one accounting staff person here. The services are all automated through Easter Seals Arc. So they have a lot of electronic paperwork, more so than we ever were able to at our scale with their size. But all the direct care staff will remain. The remaining other admin staff will as well. So I will go over to that building as well as a couple other staff. And then all of our program staff that are admin are still at that building. So they've always been at the Learning Center. So all in all, about five employees.
Five fewer employees in Woodley County now than before.
Correct. And we are actually going to increase that with direct support professionals because we've had about 15 to 20 vacancies usually for our direct support staff. And with the higher wages that we can pay, we'll likely offset that as well. So, and the other two employees are merged, moving over to Bright Point. So I don't count those in those five.
I have also heard that there were significant assets as part of Passages in terms of actual money available. Will that continue to be available in Woodley County? Or does that just go to Easter Seals to be used anywhere?
Very good question. So Easter Seals believes very wholly in local leadership. So any dollars raised in Woodley County, stay in Woodley County. We have an endowment through the community foundation that will stay for individuals served in Woodley County. And all the assets that we have will transfer over. So our, our vans, our vehicles, we'll utilize those here in Woodley County. We'll maintain our Woodley County Transit contract as well. I know the county has supported us in terms of transportation funds. We still utilize those vans as well throughout the county. Our individuals still need transportation in this county. The building is paid for over at the Creative Learning Center, so there was no debt there. And same with all of our homes, they're all paid for. So the only leases we carry over are copiers, basically, so.
And the artwork outside of the Creative Learning Center is, it's good to see it when you drive by.
We're keeping that event. We did have to move it to October due to the COVID-19 pandemic, but we will have that at Columbia City High School in October as well as our art, our spotlight.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Human Resources for WIS training, please.
Thank you. I'm not sure that I necessarily need an approval, but Personnel Committee and myself, we wanted to just come before you and kind of keep you in the loop of where we're at and what we're doing. And we have the opportunity from WIS to receive some training on the factoring evaluation system. And so we would really like, like to do that. They're going to train us on the system overall. They're going to train us on the different forms that we can use, the different classifications and kind of train us too on how to classify and factor a position. And kind of, I believe our goal in this is not only to educate ourselves on the entire system, but to also maintain the system that we paid a lot to, to have in place now. And then also, we would be able to handle some of the smaller requests from department heads, like just making changes to a job description, title changes, things like that that don't have to do with pay. We would still send major changes to WIS for them to, to review, but we would be able to handle some of those smaller ones. And just to kind of create definitely a more structure to the system is our goal. So they are willing to come March 22nd and provide that training to us. It is a cost of $3,000 for that. I've spoken with the Commissioners, specifically George, on that. And we've talked about it coming out of consultant, the line item consultant from their budget. So I don't know if you have any other questions or comments?
I would just add that we estimate that it'll pay for itself in, if not any year, within two years of things that we sent to WIS now.
Is that, the amount that it's going to cost for that training, is that specific to the number of people that are going to attend the training? Or could any council member that may be on the Personnel Committee at any time in the future could come to that training also?
I can clarify. I know that it's not a per-person fee. Initially, we expected there to be five people in attendance, but I can definitely reach out and ask, ask that.
I, I would think that if there's anybody that would, on council that would like to sit in on that, I think it'd be very appropriate. So if we can find that out. I mean, we're not talking about another five people, but there might be one or two people that would like to do that.
Sure. I would do that. I can do that today.
Yeah, just, so I'm on Personnel Committee too. I just want to speak for Jennifer, not speak for, speak for her. I mean, I think we've got a, an HR person that's, that's taken it. It's starting to smooth out. I don't hear a lot of rough edges going on. So our job is to, to help her any way we can. And she suggested this and us three decide we'd like to participate in that. So that's where we got going with it. So I just want to commend Jennifer on getting this thing rolling. I think we're starting to smooth out a little bit. That's just my thinking.
Very good. All right. Thank you for that information, Jennifer. George, thank you for taking that out of your budget to pay for that training. Sheriff Gatten, please.
Morning, Mark Gatton, with the County Sheriff. I'm coming before you from the information I gave to you last month. Before we start, I guess there were some questions arose yesterday and then yet today. Let me get my paperwork laid out here, please, for a minute. Under the Indiana Code 3681012 is where it defines a sheriff's department or police department's pension, sheriff's police pension. After 1989, no changes could be made to a sheriff's department pension without the approval of the fiscal body of the county council. Also with inside the existing plan, Article 10 about employer contributions, it falls on the contributions self-provided in the general appropriations to the employer by the county council and should be paid for such general appropriations are from fees received from service of process, which we do that both ways here by a monthly thing. We broke it down. So that's why I'm coming before you because it's under your guys' authority by statute for any change with the merit board has to also approve it, then it has to come to you. Also, I brought every change from 1996 on, which has always been signed by the council president during that time if anybody wants to see it. So good morning and thank you for taking the time to listen to this request. One of my duties as a sheriff is to oversee the retirement plan for the deputies and all that are drawing from the plan. It stays in check with the merit board, McKeady and Crean are One American Company, Lake City Bank and the county council. I want to talk on McKeady and Crean are the One American Company that Stan Brown works for. They're involved night of 91 of the 92 sheriff's pensions. They handle 91, 92. When that was established, Vandenberg County did their own thing and they've never came, came aboard. They're also the actuary for the Indiana State Police, along with many other plans throughout the state. This could always change with the next sheriff if he wished to find a different actuary. Just a short background on the sheriff's pension. It was brought about because of state statute. We're one of them that are exempt from per. We're one of them that are exempt from perf. Sheriff's Department cannot join perf. Our pension target rate per year is set for six and three quarters or six point seven five return. Since being sheriff only in two thousand fifteen, two thousand eighteen, we didn't hit that mark. Remembering that, we have to remember that I can't see the future, so it's hard to say what that's going to return. Last year's numbers aren't in yet. Talking to Stan yesterday, after Council Member Auger Bright left my office, he thinks we're going to be around ten last year for... And I talked earlier about how the money goes into our retirement plan through your appropriations, through County General and the civil process fee. This talk started to change this, request to change this started in two thousand nineteen with Stan. The study was done in two thousand twenty, then Covid hit and it kind of got put on the back burner for a little bit. Then in November two thousand twenty, I took it in front of the Whitley County Merit Board. Lake City Bank was in attendance. They spoke on the money markets and discussion was opened. A motion was made and it passed five zero. There's five members on the merit board. They all voted in favor of the fifty and twenty was their first recommendation with the fifty-two, twenty-five, if that was a pass. The reason this is considered or stated as a special early retirement is that not all participants would qualify for this. There's some older people that got hired on the department after, if it was fifty-two and twenty-five, if you got hired roughly after twenty-seven, you're going to be over the age of fifty-two when you draw anyways. I have two, I believe, that are older than, were hired, that even the fifty and twenty, they won't be eligible. They would fall back to the fifty-five and twenty. One of the reasons I sent out the information and requested the change, I pointed out to everybody that somebody can come in from the outside and have two consecutive sheriff terms, four years each, and then leave with a pension after eight years. With today's base pay for a deputy, that would be for two thousand twenty-one's pay, it would roughly take fifteen years to get the same return that somebody from the outside can come in and get an eight. Even if I figured four thousand dollars more with overtime and holiday, it would still take between fourteen and fifty years to get the same return out of it. That's the way it's set up. And somebody from the outside would have to be fifty-five still to draw anyways. They wouldn't get the special early retirement. I'm just asking that a twenty-year veteran be able to get a return quicker by age if they so choose. But they can also choose to drop if they want to retire three years later after signing up. That's the max they can do. With most of the people being younger, I know we all say we know what we signed up for. We do when we're younger. But one of the reasons I, coming before you to ask is, you start working a four and two schedule. When you're young, you don't think anything about it. You start having family. So you're losing, you're losing valuable time with family. So I'm thinking if you could get out earlier, maybe you can recover some of that. Yesterday, after talking with Council Member Auger Bright, there was a lot of questions brought to my attention that I quickly got on the phone and spent about the next hour with Stan Brown trying to clear up some things. First, I was asked, I would like to address if the change has a negative impact on the plan. Stan's response to that was no. Like I said, please reflect back on they have ninety-one of the ninety-two sheriff's retirement plan. And a lot of the information I received came from Stan Brown. To me, that speaks volumes of the reliability. Back to the answer, no. Stan advised me, that was the point of the study, is why we did it. It took, it took an account of the impact it would have on the plan. I also informed him of those drawing that they might get a better return over the years. That was a question. And he told me straight up, very well could happen. Right now, several retirees drawing are approaching the same amount of time of drawing as they did years of service at the department. So they will probably exceed the amount of years that they put into the plan, they'll draw further. There's a couple in that way. He said that would, that's a trade-off for drawing earlier, but with a smaller benefit. He said they can make it back over time, but there were too many variables for him to give me an exact timeframe. Variables such as if you held any rank at the department, which you pay would be higher, which in your pension is going to be higher, whether you join the drop. And all depending on your extra years of service. So like I'd stated earlier, you can stay up to thirty-two years, or you could stay longer, you just can't stay past seventy. But you max out at seventy-four percent at thirty-two years of service. If you hit thirty-two years of service, you can no longer join the drop. As the validation report I gave you guys of the, well, this was the study, is validation report, the county's contribution in two thousand twenty was twenty-eight point nine percent of the payroll. Under scenario one, which was the fifty-two years of age and twenty-five years of service, it would go to thirty point two percent of payroll for an increase of one point three percent. Under scenario two, it would go to the fifty years old and twenty years of service. It would go to thirty-two point five percent or an increase of three point six percent. Stan wanted me to point out that Whitley County Police Retirement Plan and Benefit Plan is currently, right now, eighty point one percent funded. If changed, it would go to seventy-eight percent still funded for the fifty-two and twenty-five, or seventy-five point six funded for the fifty and twenty. Stan also wanted everyone to know that the demographics right now of the Whitley County Sheriff's Department, that this is a good time to make a change with the younger and the, with so many with not so many years of service. He also wanted me to be very clear that the smaller counties that they manage, our estimated payouts are looking to double over the next ten years, with bigger departments tripling. This was shown on the page twenty and twenty-one that I had given you. One of the biggest contributing factors to this for counties was in the mid to late nineties, the government had the cops program going on, where you could apply for a grant and bring officers on for three years at, if I remember right, was like seventy-five or eighty percent of the pay and the county picked the rest. The catch to that grant was at the end of that three years, the county had to retain said employers or employment unless they were going to pay back the granted money. So that was pushed several times, I know, by President Clinton. And there were two of us that were hired on the sheriff's department during that time, Scott Geist and I. If we could, could we look at page twenty and twenty-one, if you still have them from the packet I had sent? The scenario one, age fifty-two and twenty-five years of service. It's two hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars difference than the estimated projected payout of the current plan to the request of that plan. With that being said, Stan said over that ten years, the employee contributions for that would be about a hundred and forty thousand dollars paid out of that. He also wanted me to tell you that these numbers are based on the actual year, like when you see two, one, one, two, it's the actual year that person would turn the age or whatever planet it is, fifty-five, fifty-two, fifty. He said that doesn't mean they're going to leave right then, but that's how they project the plan when you hit the age and years of service requirement. And then the fifty and twenty years would be a four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollar difference throughout that ten years, again with about a hundred and forty of that contribution coming from the employees.
Explain that again to me, Marcus.
Okay.
Now, just let me ask my question, maybe it'll explain itself. Did you say that's the total over ten years? Or that is the ten-year dip, what will be spent in the tenth year?
That is the total overall ten years added together. So right now, we can just take like the fifty-two and twenty-five on page twenty. If you added the first column of the current plan up, it's three million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
See, we don't have that final number.
Well, I had to do that, Stan and I did that yesterday.
Okay.
Then the fifty-two and twenty-five payout would be four million, two hundred and thirty-six dollars, two hun- two hundred and thirty-six thousand and eighty-one dollars. So that's your difference of two seventy-five, four fourteen, he gave.
Okay.
And then the employee contribution would be around a hundred and forty thousand of that money.
Thank you.
Now, if you're not already confused, I will, I shall really muddy up the water for you here.
Hey, Mark.
Yeah.
Before we go any further, for people that are going to be watching the meeting and people don't know, just back up for one second and set the baseline on what the benefit is set now and what the, what the deputies do and what the benefit is that they enjoy at this time.
Okay. Currently, right now, to draw a full pension without a reduction, you have to be fifty-five years of age and twenty years of service. And I had sent that paperwork. There's a catch on a partial pension with, I think there was three of us that are eight years and two or three that were the eight years and one month. And then everybody else is ten years to get even a partial. So at ten years, you're looking at twenty-five percent they could pull. If they left it, if they left it ten years, they could freeze twenty-five percent and wait to pull it at fifty-five, wherever they may go. So anytime after those dates I sent you that you're completely invested, you could leave and freeze it until the age fifty-five.
Yep, thank you.
One more question on that. Are you eligible then to take it at age fifty-five? Does your pension start at age fifty-five regardless? If you, when you leave at age fifty-five, you begin drawing then and not anytime later?
Correct. You start drawing at fifty, unless, under the current plan, if you join the drop at fifty-five, your pensions froze and they set that monthly contribution back. And then at fifty-eight, if you stayed all three years, you would draw.
Then you get the lump sum.
You get that three-year lump sum, and then you start.
Okay.
So that was, the drop, I think, was introduced in oh-eight, oh-nine, I think it was. I guess any further questions on what I've went over so far? Okay, my request will be coming at you as, please remember, I've done my due diligence, as this plan is my future too. I wouldn't be asking if I didn't trust One America's decision on what they thought the plan could do. This next statement is probably going to muddy the water again. The study was done with no sunset date set. No sunset date is means if it was written up and you guys would sign and enact it, that makes everybody that's in the plan right now eligible for that benefit. Even if at a later date you changed it, everybody that would be working there the day it was signed is set for this. Now, the concern with that, I know there were some concerns when I was talking with Mr. Auger Bright yesterday, was the impact that this could have, which Stan doesn't think that we have an issue. But he says one of his options he would offer, if you'd be willing to move forward with either one of these scenarios, is put an ending date of twelve thirty-one of two thousand twenty-five to let it run through that timeframe and then reevaluate or look at it. Another option I talked to Mr. Auger Bright was about, that if it was set where it was going to continue on, I've talked with all the deputies and they would be willing to contribute another percent of their own income in. Right now, we do three percent. They'd be willing to go up to four to help offset the county cost on the fifty and twenty. But they're skeptical about doing it if it would stop in twenty-five, because then they've put in of something they're not going to get a return on. The other option, of course, is the fifty-two and twenty-five. But he also said, if you want to, you know, for a better peace of mind, put that same ending date of twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five, and then that way you'll have numbers to see what is done to the plan.
Let me interrupt again, Mark. With the no sunset, that would only apply to the officers that are hired during the period. And if it was amended later on, like five years from now, that would be a different set of rules for the additional officers that are hired.
Right now, if you wrote it with that, yeah, if you wrote it with that right now, the only people that would benefit on this, if you ended it in two thousand twenty-five, would be the people that felt eligible between now and December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, not hired, but haven't even become vested.
Correct. Have, have fulfilled both requirements of age and years of service.
So younger officers wouldn't be able to expect that this would be the plan when they retired if we didn't change it?
Correct. If you continued it, then that would fall under them. And then that's where you could request back to the contribution of four percent from the deputies, which would be on today's payroll, would be roughly about eleven thousand dollars more into the plan.
But they would never lose that one percent, that's theirs, they contribute that.
Correct. That money would stay in the plan. With that being said on that, I guess, just to let you in, since I've taken over as sheriff, we had some really good years, we all know that through there. The biggest year loss I had was a negative five percent, the other was not even one full percent. So the plan's grown roughly since I've taken over, has grown just about one million dollars. So we are sitting roughly at four point four million right now in our plan.
Mark, would we, would we know when, when we hit the recession in oh-eight, oh-nine, what those numbers look like? We probably don't go back that far, but that would be kind of interesting to know.
Okay, in oh-eight, Jim, that's where, but prior to oh-eight, we were what they considered a funded ratio of a hundred percent. And that's, oh-eight was the first year we went down to eighty-eight percent funded then.
Yeah, I would assume that. Didn't get anything for investments or anything, so that would, that would be curious just to...
That's when you start seeing those negatives. So my request to you today, counsel, would be to request one of those two new benefit plans for the current department with the end date of twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. I would also request that a representative from council either come to the annual pension review with Lake City and Stan, or I can speak for myself, or you can write it in, however, we can have Stan, they'll write the paperwork up. Either come back and report on how the pension's doing, or write a report and send it to everybody on how the pension's doing.
Mark, help me understand how putting that sunset date in helps the county? Because it certainly does not help the officers.
It helps the county if you guys, if you, as a group, think, or even the merit board thinks that the plan has taken too big of a hit, you can end it on that date and go back to the fifty-five and twenty.
Oh, if the investments have tanked.
Yes. If the pension starts going in a negative direction, which they would tell us, I'm sure, a lot sooner than that. But that is the date where the, a total review could be done with the next sheriff, whoever that may be, because I won't be here. But that will be the decision at that time on whether you want to continue whatever plan you might choose, if there is a plan you choose, or whether you want to end said plan at that time.
Would the intention be to set a precedent to review every? Would the intention be to set a precedent to review every...
I'm hoping not to offend him, but it's taking, I mean, there's the smaller community, less call.
Yeah, I just, I guess I should stop there.
And I think, I'm just, I'm gonna throw a number out there that is a very loose number, but it's pretty accurate. We're not talking about tremendously high pensions. I mean, most of the people that are retiring from law enforcement right now, John, I know yours is probably significantly lower, but most people are probably in the thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar range is what they're going to be drawing as a pension. So it's not, you know, and that number is smaller if you do your minimums as far as your time is. So a minimum right now with a fifty and even a fifty and twenty would probably be someplace around twenty-seven or twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that's, I'm just going off of preparing myself.
And that requires another position.
It's a very, it's a very, you, you can't, it's not something to sustain your, your life with, let alone your lifestyle.
And Thor and I talked a while back, and he said he didn't recognize it either when you first start because you're just young hoe. But then he said, I started looking at the retirees at the Columbia State Police Department, thought twenty years, one month, twenty years, six months, and that's when they were getting out. And I think it's changed. In July, I'll be there, what, twenty-six years? In the twenty-six years I've been at the sheriff's department, I never thought policing would be what it is today. I never thought the respect for police officers would be at the level it's at today.
Well, if we're just going to share opinions about what we think we would like to see, I do support the idea of fifty-twenty. I'm not sure how I feel about the sunset in four years. That just seems kind of a short period of time for the officers that are already there in accumulating time. You know, I, I feel like if you're there now, the deal you come in and, in under is the deal you should live with, rather than us changing it for those officers, only allow ourselves to change it for incoming officers if necessary. But that's not as fiscally responsible as I probably want to be.
I, I have a couple of thoughts, and we had a good talk yesterday, Mark, and I have a son that's a police officer. One of my concerns is at twenty years, do we have a rollover of personnel? And, and yes, your plan said it, it could be a little cheaper for the county, but and, and what we've seen is some people do move on, and, and John and I talked about that, to do another job and so forth, and, and obviously, that's their choice. But I could see for the county, people get twenty and, and we're looking for later down the road, six, eight years, it looks like, we could be looking at more officers to try to rehire, and, and we lose our experience with that. I think all plans have to be reviewed, Tim. I just don't think we can let them go and go and go. Fisher, you, you guys do insurance and, and so forth all the time, and we're talking a lot of dollars here. And I'm sure companies across the country have, in some cases, it might have, might have broken their, their pensions and that. So I think everything always has to have adjustments. I know at the bank in thirty-five years, my job changed a lot over that time. So I, I think it's natural, yours is a little more public, obviously, and, and so forth. So, and it's national now with the news and, and everything else. So, but I, but we do have that change. It always happens and everything. But it's got, whether it's sunsetted, I think it needs to be reviewed occasionally. So we, so we know where we're at because there, there's a lot of moving parts to all this health insurance, that's, that's a cost amount, and we know what that cost is doing and other things. So I just think it would be some way to, to review this plan. Because when was the last time this was reviewed, Mark?
We looked at it in November last year. We look at it, Lake City comes twice a year.
But you as a police merit board, as a sheriff merit board looks at it, but did the council look at it?
No.
Okay. And what, you know when that last time was?
No, Jim.
Yeah.
Probably the, probably the last amendment.
Yeah, so I, I think it needs to be reviewed on that.
Yeah, the last amendment probably was just looked at the retirement age, but I don't think, honestly, in my time as chief deputy or even as sheriff, I don't think anybody's ever came over here and told you exactly like today what's in it, even though, like you said, Jim, the merit board meeting is a public meeting, that anybody could come and listen to what's in it, so.
So, so I, I do think the plan needs to, to be looked at. I, I told Mark this. If, if we wanted to move forward, I, I would probably really like Stan to come in and go through that booklet with us. And not that Mark can't do a good job of explaining that, but that, that he walks through that material with us, so we maybe better understand it. And that, so that we, we do make an educated decision here.
Which is why I tried to call him right after you left and tried to answer most of your questions for you.
Right, so.
I think you're right. Review is important, and it needs to be written into whatever ordinance we pass.
Yeah, whether it's sunsetted, I don't know if we like that term, but reviewed, I think it's important for, for any plan.
Do our retired officers continue on the county health insurance plan?
No, they do not. The, our retirement fund slash benefit fund does not come with insurance.
So it's up to the officer to find his own.
Correct. And once you lock in at your pension, under ours, there is no increase. That is what you're locked at for whatever term you pick of drawing.
What do you mean by whatever term you picked as drawing you've got?
You have different options, which Jim, being the banker, I thought he could help me out yesterday, but threw one term at him. He's like, I don't know either, so. You have different options you can pick. You can take a single life annuity. You can take a hundred percent survivor benefits to, most of the time, it's your wife. I mean,
Right, yeah.
If you're not married, there's a reduced benefit like that could go to your kids, but that's for only, I believe, ten years, and then you're, that's shut down. You have a sixty-six point six-seven percent you can leave your spouse and a fifty percent you could leave your spouse, which every time you choose one of those, your benefit package keeps reducing your monthly payment. Yeah, you know that, don't you?
But good for life.
The life of your spouse unless you take the twenty-year certainty plan, which I, I can't help you.
Okay.
I'm assuming that you're twenty years guaranteed that money, but it is a...
So twenty years, you wouldn't be done with that pension?
I believe, are you done? Are you guaranteed twenty to be paid out? But the reduction is almost more than half of what you withdraw.
A classic example, I retired with twenty-seven years on the state police. I was fifty-two years old. At that time, my pretty and keen went through my options on it and went down through. One thing that hasn't been talked about, if you are in a retirement plan that does not pay regularly into social security, when you apply for social security on it, you are set, put in a formula where it reduces the amount of social security that you receive at sixty-five and a half years old, seventy, whatever it is on. Wants you to make a decision on your retirement, on what options you're gonna have, whether a hundred percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent spousal on it. That money stays the same. It does not increase. So twenty-eight years ago, when I retired, I got a set amount of it, and that's what I have made on my retirement program for the next twenty-seven, twenty-eight years. There's no cola involved in it. So these are just options that that officer has at his discretion when he makes his decision to retire. And we talked about going from one job at which you work a split shift, bouncing shift, whatever it is on. When you're a young man, it makes no difference to you. You can go to bed at one o'clock in the morning, get up at six o'clock in the morning and go to work, and things are working normal. When you get to the age of forty, forty-five, fifty on it, it makes a big difference, and the stress level is a lot higher. Now, I never realized it, but when I retired on it and took the job as town marshal in a villa on it, my wife said, you don't have to hear the stress you have with the state police on it, and it's something you don't realize as an officer, but it's there. Other people around you realize it on it. Going back to the option one, two, three on it, I'm gonna have to agree with Tim. And usually, I looked at this, and I thought fifty-two, twenty-five would be the best way to go on it. But listening to Mark, listening to recommendations on it, my thoughts are the option scenario number two with fifty and twenty years service with a sunset or option end of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Those are my thoughts.
So I'm just gonna reiterate what the sheriff's asking and ask if there's support for it, and then he will go to the merit board and have something drawn up. So the sheriff is asking for fifty, twenty with an additional one percent increase for the deputies with deputies' contribution with a review date set at twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Is that what you're requesting?
Yes, sir.
So I'm gonna ask as, in a straw vote here, if there is support for the sheriff to move forward with that request?
Yes.
All those that, in a straw vote, would please raise the right hand. So at this point, there's four there.
This is just for the study.
That's just, that's just, that's for him to move forward with the merit board to bring it back for approval.
But with those conditions you just talked?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm, I'm interested in looking at this further, but I don't know if I'm ready to make that, that decision right down to those factors.
Yeah, let me clarify what I just voted on. I was voting for further information being gathered and presented to us. What you just said was, we just voted to make the vote to pass. Is that how I'm understanding?
It was a straw vote to show support of a particular, of one of the choices. So if we're not at that yet, then go ahead.
I'm not at that.
Okay, then that's, that's what we need to know.
So here's one of the things I would need to. If it would be to where we were at, then I would get a hold of Stan, and the numbers would be ran, which would then have the county's complete contribution with the, if it was projected to go to the four of what, because that number of forty-one's gonna come down then. So I would need Stan to run the numbers again so I could come back one more time with the exact figures, because I can't sit here today and tell you this is what the county's gonna say.
But what he just said was we were voting for it to pass, correct?
No, we're voting for, to show the sheriff
That we're committed to twelve...
Well, that there would be support for the particular plan that he's asking for, because he will need to go and get the report done. Then he needs to go through the merit board. The merit board needs to approve that, and then it would come back to us for final implementation.
On the fifty-twenty, the employee contributes the one percent, and then we review it at twenty twenty-five, correct? Is that what we're...
They would contribute one more percent right now.
Correct, I understand that. That's what I meant. And then if we did the fifty-two twenty-five, they don't add the one percent.
Correct, because that was an increase of, what is it, John, fourteen thousand and some, one point three percent, so.
Okay, all right.
And not as many people, council member, would get that benefit at fifty-two twenty-five as it would fifty and twenty.
Okay.
I believe I, I agree with Jim. I think we ought to have Stan come in and, and talk to us.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just...
I think we need to gather knowledge because this is a big, this is a big decision, and it affects a lot of people and a lot of families. And I don't think it should be taken quick or lightly. And I think we need to get, you've gathered your knowledge, you've shared it, I get it. I just think we should gather more.
Well, I can have Stan run those numbers, and I think all, from all their emails, he's working remotely, so he'll probably either have to call in or, I don't know if you have a Zoom he can get on or...
Um, I can, yeah, I can.
You know, when I first walked into this meeting, I'm not really for it. I'm for keeping the guys there and keeping their built-up experience and knowledge. That's how I came into this meeting. Now, after listening to everything you gathered, you did a great job. Then I kind of swayed to the fifty-two twenty-five. That one percent the employee gathers, that's huge, actually. So I can see the fifty-twenty. So you just need to work it a little bit more.
Okay. Just, I'm not cutting on anybody, but throughout the years of working in police, don't hit me. As certain officers get older, they're less productive.
I get it. Yeah, I understand.
Maybe they work smarter, you know? I, I got another question. If an officer wanted to contribute one more percent voluntarily. Does that change his pension down the road? I mean, does he help himself?
No, and just, and just alleviates the county from paying that one percent because the percentages are gonna be what they are.
Yeah, he cannot, in that plan, he can't. He could join his own four fifty-seven or four oh one K or whatever.
It's not like out here in business where if you contribute more and they match more, that helps. I didn't know if that would, would help or not.
You know, and, and as the community goes forward with a new facility. Is that going to require more officers that would offset the plan a little bit more?
A, a new jail facility would not offset the merit, deputy merits.
Okay, but would, would it require more officers hired?
Well, we went up and looked, or we went down to Fulton County and looked and I'm gonna try to get to, is it Adams, George that has one up and running the same? They're actually saying that bigger facility could be ran.
With less people.
With less people, the way they're built nowadays. I don't foresee having to add many confinement officers to a new facility unless it would be. We didn't have some kind of courtroom setting or all the video court where we had to transport people back and forth. There would be the problem.
And, and, and the purpose of the twenty twenty-five review. Let's just start this process all over if it's not gaining the interest rates. Is that how I'm understanding it?
You wouldn't have to start it over. You guys would, we, an amendment would be just written from the other sheriff. That that plan would no longer continue and it would fall back to the fifty-five, twenty.
That'd be kind of hard to do after you've ran that for.
Well, you gotta.
But that's a protection that's in place.
I understand that, but that'd be a hard thing to do.
That's our protection, essentially.
Yes.
I, I think the, I think the positive thing, Mark, and I, and I say this positive. Is that it's being reviewed by us, which it hasn't been for quite some time. And, and so that keeps us abreast of what's going on and then we are looking at this. We are willing to look at this, so I, I think, I think, I think it's been a positive meeting.
Well, and if we're gonna look at this, I think we should look at all of it because he's, he's made a few statements on the eight-year sheriff. Is that something we should look at or is it, I don't have a problem. The, the community votes that sheriff in. And if they want to vote in an outside sheriff, that's their prerogative. And that's their right. So I don't understand the push on the eight-year sheriff program. But if that's something we need to look at, we need to do it at this point and get it all done at the same time.
Well, that, that's already in there and I didn't have a study done on that because I believe the same thing you do. It's. An elected official, so if somebody from the outside does come in, but that burden of the cost falls back on the county, that's all I was trying to make everybody aware of. And I, like I had stated, I feel that if you worked twenty years there, you ought to be able to get your return at what I thought was twenty when somebody come in and get it at eight. I wasn't, I'm not cutting on anybody for coming in and doing that. I'm just saying that they get that return quicker, so I'd like to see the guys, if they choose to leave earlier.
But with the position of sheriff, I, I feel that, I mean, you should. If you step forward and take on that position. And you do a good job because you're rolling it over to the second four-year term, you wouldn't get that if you weren't. I think you earned that, actually.
I'd probably talk you out of it.
No, thanks, but I'm just saying, if we're gonna do this, I think we need to do everything and just start fresh. So let's just.
One more question. The funding for this is, that's not part of the salary ordinance. It's just a separate ordinance, correct?
Which like in my email when I talked to Stan, he said the four percent would be enacted after it was signed with the deputies. Your guys' contribution wouldn't go up till the budgets were made for next year's budget. And right now, I think the county puts back or puts in about twenty-four thousand and some change and then the civil process changes monthly depending on how many papers we serve. And then there's usually one month, I believe it's around November that you make the difference up if we didn't hit our monthly goal.
What fund does that come out of? Sheriff's Department or General or?
I, let me, let me, give me just a minute. Let me check, but I'm pretty sure it's.
I think it's County General. The civil process comes from the money the clerk sends us back from the papers.
And you had made a comment. Oh, maybe a while back. That you thought you could come up with some help on that. Was that the employee one percent?
Employee contribution.
I didn't know, maybe there's additional you were holding back.
Yeah, it does come out of County General, alright.
Any other questions for the sheriff, please? Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate your time.
Commissioner report, please.
Okay, we had some busy meetings here. We missed our, our last meeting, but. One of the things that we did this, yesterday, we, we passed a resolution against the House Bill thirteen eighty-one. Which is basically what that's doing is it's removing the ability for local control for. Solar energy, wind energy, that the state would, would control where and how that that could be placed within the community. And eliminate any local control on that. So the, the IACC, the IAC, everybody's been trying to. Get our legislators to reconsider that because. What they're looking at doing is standardizing everything. But again, all they're doing is taking away from home rule and, and taking more control away from the, the communities. So. We adopted a resolution against the, the House Bill thirteen eighty-one. And supports local home rule. One of the other things that we did is we re-adapted the Title VI ADA plan that we, we approved before. And. The reason was up for that was because of the, to verify the local match that we'll come up with. We were presented with a grant of two point two million dollars. For the ADA plan, which will be stretched out until, for six years. And we're committed to right around five hundred thousand dollars in that six years. One of the other things. That we're working on is we've been working with the sheriff and, and the sheriff's department on. We've got some issues with radios. It's been ongoing for, forever. It just seems like since we, but two thousand and fifteen. I think we've got some good programs that we're looking at now to identify the, the issues. And we're working towards. And working with the state on that to. Resign all of those issues. And then, you know, the other thing that, that I can think of right now is we, we've been working with the need study. That we did for the jail corrections facilities. What we're doing with that is we're just trying to consider. You know, what, what needs do we have? And then we're also gonna get a hold of Baker Tilly and, and see what can we afford. First as a community, as a county and kind of back everything up, but that's going forward. That's about it.
Any questions of Commissioner Trump, please?
Can they override you on that H, the House Bill eighteen thirty-one?
Yes. Yeah, it's going to the Senate right now. I think yet this week, if it's approved.
What's it looking?
We've talked to Senator Zay, Senator Zay is against that, but it seems like they're, they're really pushing. Representative or Senator Holliday. Soliday is, is really pushing that. They want to get everything. Standardized.
When is that bill? When is that vote?
Uh, that'll be this week yet. They're, they're voting on it. Uh, Joanne Noll and Larry Long have been gone down and they've, uh, lobbied against it. They've talked to the, the Hou, the House down there on that. And we as commissioners have been calling regularly our state representatives and, and the senators to let them know that. You know, we're not happy about this, that just taking more control away from the counties.
I wish there was a way to get word out so people would contact their representatives. I mean, I.
Well, this came up so quickly for us.
Yeah, I called, oh, it was probably even three weeks ago. Put the word out to, and asked people to call and it's just, you don't ever hear anything.
Yeah, we weren't even aware of it until IACC, the Indiana Association of County Commissioners. Contacted us, told us that we need to start looking at that and calling the, the senators and the.
So everybody call.
And you're, and the conversations with people on it, any indicators on their local representatives or senators, what direction they're leaning?
They're, all of them are against it. But there are a lot of, a lot of the senators right now that are for it, which is concerning, but. Hopefully with all the resolutions, there's, there's been quite a few resolutions from the counties. Which really, I mean, all it does is, is, it's, it's not anything legally binding, but it's a resolution saying that, that we support local or home rule.
George, do you happen to know if the Senate is looking at the identical House bill or if it would have to go to committee because of differences?
I think it's already been to committee and it's final vote this week. Yeah, they tried to, Senator Zay tried to knock it out of committee and, and. His efforts didn't work, so. It's going forward. Just hopefully they don't have enough votes.
Thank you, George. Next on the agenda is the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? And at this time, I'd ask, are there any additions or corrections as they were presented? Call for motion, please.
Make motion, we accept the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Warner, second by, by Councilman Warner, second by Councilman Western. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please, just on the raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let be shown they were passed unanimously with all board members present. Councilman Barrett? Councilman Western? Councilman Auger-Bright?
Yeah, I have one thing, Mr. Chairman. Last meeting, you, you brought up kind of a. Direction on items to come before the council, that they have, that information has to be in at least two weeks. Ahead of time before we would hear that. I understand probably where you're coming from on that, that people come in at the last minute or don't have all their information, but I got thinking about that. That's fourteen days, two weeks, plus another thirty days. That's forty-four days before, since we meet once a month before something is brought here. I would. Hope that we could soften that a little bit, that if, if. A department or someone has a request and they have all the information, that we could shorten that up to. Three or four days if they have all the information. Just to hear that rather than have it go another thirty or forty days. But I understand probably where you were coming from on that, that they come in, they don't have all their information. Council, in some cases, wastes time because they're not prepared. But I would like to see if we could shorten that a little bit if that request has all their information. That's, that's the only thing I'm, I have.
I, I would leave that up to council to make a decision on it and I would tell you that when I came on council five years ago or four and a half years ago. That I was getting my packet on, in Monday's mail for a Tuesday meeting. And that was the first time that I was seeing a lot of information. And so when we would meet then the next day, we either weren't educated and did our work on those issues. Or we kicked it a month down the line, so. And a lot of times the information was pretty much prepared by the people who wanted to bring it to us. They just. Got into the routine of when it would get to the auditor for her to put the packet together and get it to us. So we put that deadline in place. So that we would have a two-week time period that we could do our investigative work and ask questions and, and look into things to happen. So that was the standard that was put for that. There are exceptions that have been made and that continue to be made between. The auditor, when she receives something, if it's after that deadline and the, and the chair of the. Of council and things are with passages was brought in today because it was an informational only. So those decisions are kind of looked at as a per-time thing. So it is, it, it's softened. Depending on what the information is, but if it's something that's gonna take some work, then it's, it's, it's pretty standard.
So I, I guess I asked you just, if they do have all their information and something that we can get. Whether it's through our emails or something, then we try to put that on the docket if possible.
Yep, and those are always considered, absolutely.
Yep, thank you.
So my question then for that would be if someone does come to me, say on Thursday. Or say, okay, say Wednesday, because normally I post the agendas on Thursday, the Thursday before the meetings. Would you want me to like contact the chair, like I still do, and then amend the agenda? Do you have to wait till that Wednesday and then send you, like email you the agendas? Like.
Well, I think when you go to advertise your meetings, certainly if you don't have it by then, and I. Unless it's an emergency, I'd maybe, sorry.
I like the two-week requirement because that gives Jan a plenty of time to get her information gathered up for her agenda, get it to us. Because there's a stipulation, if it's an emergency, of course, we have to follow through with that. And if something comes up like Jim's saying, we need to be a little more lenient on, I think it should go right to Councilman Hodges and he makes that decision being chair.
Yeah, I mean.
If it's, if it's serious, if it's not serious, then it can, won't be on the two-week wait period.
Yeah, it's a forty-day wait period. Till our next meeting.
Well, it, it's a two-week timeframe, so actually it's two weeks.
If they're getting the information, the agenda, two days before a meeting is thirty days.
Right. So if I might. Just mention that with the exception of Councilman Wheeler, if we received our communication all electronically because we had appropriate devices. That were less expensive than the ones the commissioners had.
Back up a little bit. I have the device. I just don't have it. I can't get the internet.
Said we could shorten it if we had a better communication system that was all electronic and always available and automatically we can open it.
I'm with.
But I don't know that we'd want to shorten it except for.
I don't have adequate internet either.
And again, it would be very, very relevant to the subject because of the amount of time that we would need to put in, so. Two weeks sometimes is not enough time to do the work on some of the stuff that we get.
But I, but I, I could leave that up to your discretion, Charlie.
I would like to and maybe we could look at this at the end of the year. I would like to see us meeting twice a month rather than once a month. And I would like to see us start meeting in the evening, so it'd be more conducive to open government transparency and having. The public be able to come in too, so and I think if we would meet twice a month rather than once a month, that would be, it really helped the situation. Because that would cut down that timeframe too. So I think those are all some good conversations that we could have and. Come up with our meeting schedule going, moving forward into next year, but in the meantime, I will, I will be as. Open-minded as I can about anything that gets brought to get on the agenda in as timely manner as, as possible with us still having the availability to do our work.
Something like the sheriff request probably would not fulfill that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, but something else, when you get it on, I, I think we ought to try, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilman Warner?
I have nothing, nothing more.
The only thing I have is to let everyone be aware that at next month's meeting. That myself and Vice Chair Wheeler will both be absent. So I have asked Councilman. So I have asked Councilman Barrett to fill in and run the meeting for next month. But just keep that in mind if something comes up as far as having a quorum here, um, to make, to make decision at next month's meeting. Alright.
We will have a forum, right?
As of right now.
Less two of us.
A quorum is four and, and four, four here would require an unanimous vote by those four members to pass anything. So right now we have, you have five, which we would.
I think.
Alright, Mayne's adjourned.